Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 14th, and this is the Salinas City Council meeting. This meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. City Clerk?
Buenas tardes. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotunda.
Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Rocha, would you lead us?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with my nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice of Christ.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Barrera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
President.
Councilmember Osornio.
Here.
Councilmember Rocha.
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval. Mayor Craig.
Here.
Thank you.
We'll go on to Proclamations and Commendations. We have National Emergency Medical Services Week, and we have Chief Vanderveen. Are you a chief now? Did I miss that? A battalion chief. I was like, what happened to Sam? Okay. Sorry about that. Good to see you, and I think I have Councilmember Barrera giving that proclamation.
Well, congratulations. National Emergency Medical Services Week, May 19th to the 25th. Whereas Emergency Medical Service, EMS, providers play a critical role in safeguarding the health and well-being of our community. Their dedication, compassion, and expertise saves countless of lives each year, not only throughout the United States but here in Salinas. Whereas National EMS Week, observed annually during the third week of May, is a time to recognize and honor the commitment and sacrifice of our EMS professionals. Whereas EMS providers include paramedics, emergency medical technicians, dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, and other first responders who collaborate seamlessly to provide emergency medical care, transportation, and support to those in need. And whereas these courageous individuals in front of us respond selflessly to emergency calls, often putting themselves in harm's way to provide immediate medical attention. Thank you for that. They stabilize patients and they transport them to appropriate medical facilities. EMS providers work tirelessly around the clock, serving as a vital link between residents and healthcare systems, enhancing the survival and recovery rates of patients in emergency situations. Also, EMS providers also play a pivotal role in public health, education, and disaster preparedness and community outreach promoting safety, injury prevention, and health education initiatives. Whereas during National EMS Week, we express our deep gratitude to all of you that provide for this unwavering dedication, professionalism, and commitment to excellence, which contribute to the overall health and safety of the people of Salinas sent throughout the county. Now therefore, Mayor Kimberly Craig, on behalf of this council hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to the 25th of 2024, National Emergency Medical Services Week in Salinas and urge all residents to join us in recognizing and honoring the valuable contributions of our EMS professionals. Thank you very much.
All right, and I got your title wrong. Division Chief of EMS Shane Vanderveen, welcome.
That's correct. Thank you. Thanks for having me, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for recognizing National EMS Week and also recognizing the hard work that our EMTs and paramedics do every day. The Salinas Fire Department responds to over 12,000 medical calls annually. These are calls ranging from respiratory emergencies to strokes, from vehicle accidents to drug overdoses. Most notably, last year, our firefighters saved the lives of 50 individuals who were suffering cardiac arrest. The demand for EMS in our city is growing 7% each year. The medical service that your fire department provides is vital to our community because it's a service that the community truly relies on. I'm excited for the future of our EMS. We continue to offer the opportunity for our EMTs to attend paramedic school. In fact, we have two more firefighters starting the program on July 31st. We are constantly training and we are utilizing the latest in medical technology to provide the highest level of care for our residents. On behalf of Salinas Fire Department, thank you again for recognizing National EMS Week. You'll find on your desks, we've given you a small gift as our token of appreciation, some stress reliever balls. Thank you.
Well-needed and well-deserved. Thank you. Very much appreciate the work that Salinas Fire Department does. And I do want to take a quick moment to acknowledge our newest sworn member, Taffy, who is our fire dog. Yep, she's like, okay, my name got called. And I had the privilege of swearing her in a couple of weeks ago, so along with several other department promotions. So, thank you all for being here today. All right, we have another proclamation for Yolanda Cervantes, the former Police Community Advisory Committee member, and we have her dad and mom here. Victor Cervantes is here to accept the proclamation. Yolanda was my appointee, and so I wanted to take a quick moment just to share the family's commitment to supporting our public safety departments here in Salinas. I know that Victor has been a leader, as has his family, in the cruising car clubs that we have here in Salinas, and the ongoing support that they've shown for particularly our police department has been remarkable. You've done fundraisers, you have shown that there is a widespread opportunity to work to reduce crime in our community. So I just wanted to say thank you to not only Yolanda but the entire family for your ongoing dedication and effort in serving Salinas. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for that. Like you said, I'm here on behalf of Yolanda, so it's all about her today. So, you know, when it comes to our community, she is involved with anything and everything that she can do. And when it comes to our, you know, police department, she's always been, you know, for that. Anything they need or they, you know, that she can provide for them, she is willing to do that. And, you know, she recognizes the need for that in our city. As our city grows and we see a lot of things happening and, you know, instead of our city police department growing with the city, it seems to be shrinking. And, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, constantly worries her, and she's constantly worried about that. It's safety, it's always in her head, and like I said, but that is the reason why, you know, she gets involved with all this. And, you know, she just wanted me to tell you guys that she appreciates everything that you guys do for the city and, you know, the police department, the fire department, of course, you know, our first responders. It's all about working as a group. And, you know, I just wanted to say thank you. And on behalf of the family, like you said, we're involved with a lot of stuff, but, you know, we don't do it for ourselves. Most of the time, we do it for our community. And if you see like the stuff that we do through the Low Rider Council and through my club, which is Street Life, we do it, it's all like for the community. We don't do it for profit. It's mostly for the community. And, you know, we're just glad that you guys could see that and appreciate that. But on behalf of Yolanda, thank you very much, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Very much appreciate her work. Yolanda served on the Police Community Advisory Committee for multiple years, almost six or I believe seven years. So very much appreciate. It's a lot to volunteer for anything in this community, and to give that kind of time and effort is very much appreciated. So with that, I'm going to, I don't know if we have somebody to take photos in the audience, but I do want to make sure that we acknowledge the National Emergency Medical Services Week. So if we could have our fire peeps come on up, we'll get a photo, and then the Cervantes family will do you right after we get done with fire. Okay? Thank you. All right, so we're gonna have
Thank you.
... Throw that down there. Show that off, pretty please.
Come on, Murray, get the photo.
We're gonna take photos. Oh, we got the chief in there too. She has not appeared in a case, so I'm gonna double check on that. Poppy.
What, you want us to hear yours, or you're sitting?
No, it's just a
Oh, do you want to change chairs?
Okay, and our National Poppy Day recipient has not been able to make it on time. I think she had some car trouble, so we will be sure to get her the proclamation. We'll go on to public comment. If you wish to make a general public comment or comment on a specific agenda item, you're encouraged to attend the city council meeting in person or attend the Zoom webinar and use the raise hand icon. Email public comments received have been distributed to the mayor, the city clerk, the city council, and will be entered into the permanent record. Public comments generally are limited to two minutes per speaker. I may further limit the time for public comments depending on the agenda schedule. We're now open for public comment on items that are not on the agenda and that are in the city of Salinas's subject matter jurisdiction. Comments on agenda items should be held until the items are reached. With that, we'll go ahead and open public comment. And if I could have City Clerk turn on the monitors on the dais, that would be great.
Good afternoon. Name's Eric Peterson. And just a quick observation, three meetings this month. There used to be three council meetings a month. They tended to be shorter, easier to be a spectator at, and probably more productive because it gets a little antsy near the end. So if we can keep up three meetings a month, that might do everybody a big, big favor. Also, a note from the mayor. I can remember that because I'm old. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Mary Ann Jordan. I had two other things to mention, but since the firemen were here, I would have publicly thanked them for the service they gave for my husband the last two years. They were there all the time, within minutes. Midnight, 1 o'clock, picking him up and saying to him, we got him to the hospital. He meant more than we could say. The next thing was to invite all, everybody in this city to our Portuguese 100th anniversary on June 2nd at the Portuguese Hall on San Benito Street. They've started at Closter, Central Park here 100 years ago. And the next thing was I went out to the Baranda, deal out in Baranda, and they're having a big celebration this Saturday in honor of the being made 50 years that they've got their plaque, that they're historical. And they are renewed, our tanker completely redid it, and so they're going to be having that out there and having a big celebration out there from 11 o'clock until I think 4:00 or so on Saturday afternoon. They've done so much out there. You really, I just was, I was out there about a month ago, and I can't tell you the improvement that they've made out in there. You really need to go see it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers for public comment? Seeing none, I'll go to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on public comment? And I apologize, I can't see. Can you read the name for me? Tim? Is that correct? Okay, Tim, you're on Zoom. You're welcome to unmute. You have two minutes.
Oh, there we go. I'm unmuted. How's it going, Mayor Kimberly? I just wanted to bring up a couple things that have come to my attention. As you know, I serve on the COC Leadership Council. I'm the chair of the Live Experience Advisory Directive with homelessness. I've had several, actually quite a few complaints recently from the Steimeck Lodge since the city of Salinas has taken over operations of that property. They have implemented things such as like a no visitor policy. And then there's another concern with a resident that's in a wheelchair that they're trying to evict, that's been there a year with an eviction they're trying to do, or trying to kick her, not even evict, but kick her out, as she's not able to like move stuff around. They prevented visitors from coming to see her, and then she has no help to move stuff around in the room, and they're writing her up for it and now kicking her out. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because I have reached out to them directly, to, you know, the homeless manager, to Kessler, Kessler, Jackie, and they were supposed to come to our meeting today, and they didn't come. And there's some pressing matter that needs to be addressed, I think, for a pretty urgent case. Residents are really upset. And also the sweeps in Chinatown that have been happening every week, they're not putting a notice out, and they're taking people's property. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's happening that's opening the city up for litigation. So I'll just put that out there too. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on general public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll go on to our first hearing for the night, 24-245, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan. And we have Francisco Brambilla here, our Acting Planning Manager. Welcome.
The item that I'm bringing today is the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Fiscal Year 24-25 Annual Action Plan. This year, this year is gonna mark the, this is the final year, it's gonna be the final year of the five-year consolidated plan. This plan also describes the strategic, this plan is a strategic plan for the use of CDBG, home, and ESG funds, and it describes plan activities and funding. For our citizen participation plan, this plan requires a three-day public comment period, which started in April 13th, and it's gonna end to date May 14th. Now, during this time, we also went to the housing line use to present this item on April 30th, and today is gonna be the formal public hearing in order for us to make the final decision on the recommendations that we're gonna be presenting to you. Now, HUD requires the submission of the plan before August 16th, so we're gonna be, once we make the final decisions today, we're gonna be submitting this plan to HUD before this deadline. Now, HUD publishes annual allocations last week for fiscal year 24-25, and these allocations are as follows. For CDBG, we are allocated $1,142,629. Home is gonna be $7,29,681, which is a little bit less than what we received last year, and also ESG, $177,152, which is also less than the prior year. This funding, this funding is gonna be, we are recommending to be directed as following. And also the recommendations are based on the prior plans that the city has already implemented and also the city's priorities. For CDBG, we are recommending $440,726, which is for the admin. We also have the Sherwood Rec Center, which is $1.4 million for eating council, is gonna be $75,000. We also have $25,000 to use for any housing referrals, tenant landlord services, and also $200,000 for the Salinas Outreach and Response Team. Now, for home, there hasn't been, at the moment, we don't have any project ready, any shovel-ready projects, so there's no recommendations at this moment. So, once the city, once a project comes to the city that is shovel-ready, then we're gonna come back to the city council in order for us to allocate those funds, to those projects. And ESG, our allocations are gonna be as, our recommendations are gonna be as follows. $13,000 for admin for street outreach, we're recommending $95,308, and also for community homeless solutions in order for them to do the rapid rehousing, $68,558. One of the caveats with ESG is that we cannot use more than 60% of street outreach and emergency shelters for those activities. So that's the reason why we're actually allocating only $95,000 to Salinas Outreach and Response Team. There's no, for sake of consideration, this is not considered a project. The strategic plan initiatives, this is gonna cover the economic development, housing, affordable housing, infrastructure, environmental sustainability, public safety, youth and seniors, and effective and culturally responsible government. The department coordinations, this is a coordination between the finance department, our legal department, that reviews our agreements, library and community services, which is, they're gonna be assistant with the Sherwood Recreation Center, and also Pal Works too. Fiscal sustainability, there's no impact to general fund. This is all HUD funding, which is in the form of CDBG, home, and ESG. Now, our recommendation is to approve a resolution approving the city of Salinas, United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Fiscal Year 24-25 Annual Action Plan, and it's submitted to HUD, and authorizing the city manager to incorporate any necessary minor modifications to the fiscal year 24-25 Annual Action Plan based on community feedback and also final HUD allocations prior to submission of HUD, and addressing the mayor, designate for and on behalf of the city to execute any related agreements, contracts, certifications, and amendments related to the funding allocations set forth on this fiscal year 24-25 Annual Action Plan. And with that, I'm open for any questions and comments.
Excellent, all right. We'll go to council members for questions. I'll start to my left. Councilmember Rocha.
Yes, can you please talk about the tenant landlord services that are gonna be offered and how that matches up with our current efforts with the rental registry program?
The $25,000 that we have, that we recommend right now is to work with the Monterey College of Law, and that's going to help us with implementing a program to do tenant landlord conflict resolutions or mediations between those two, the two parties.
Okay, and I'm not sure if this should be a question for the city attorney or for you, but are there specific limitations on how those funds could be applied? Like, can it be only for programs and services? Can it be for staffing? And the reason I ask that is because as we try and build out, what I had thought the vision would have been almost like a tenant landlord support services office within community development that we were trying to build out as part of the rental registry, can those funds be used to support the development of that?
It can be used to a development that, the only reason why we're not doing it in-house is because there's, in order for us to provide those services, the city needs to be certified through HUD, which is a certification that takes a couple of years for us to get that.
Understood.
So that's the reason why we're actually going to through an outside agency in order for us to help us with those services.
And you mentioned that this is the last year of the annual action plan, which is five years, I believe?
Consolidated plan.
Consolidated plan?
Yeah, so it's a five-year plan.
Are they usually in sets of five years, the consolidated plans?
What was, what was the question again?
These consolidated plans, do they usually come in sets of five years?
Yes, yes.
And are they something that we have to apply for at the federal level? Is it something that's given to us as a city? Or how do we go about that?
No, in order for us to receive this funding, this is entitlement funding, we need to complete a five-year consolidated plan. So next year, we're gonna be in the process of actually creating that consolidated plan. We're gonna have some community outreach, we're gonna have to do some community outreach, and we need to have some community input. And also, we also need to look at the priorities that the city has in order for us to assist any low-to-mothered income households out there.
And how long does it take before the city has awarded the funds?
It's, it's, the, once you submit the action plan, you can, once your consolidated plan is approved, then your next step is gonna be to submit an action plan every year. Once you submit the action plan, if you have, if you already have your consolidated plan approved, then you can start incurring expenses on the first day of the fiscal year.
Do you expect the funding that we'll receive for the next annual action plan to be the same as the ones that we've received for the last couple of years or different?
No, we already have the final allocations, so the allocations that are shown on the slides, those are the final allocations for the next upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Okay.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera, questions?
Thank you for your report. You know, on these services, tenant landlord services, I'm trying to understand, and hopefully some people are listening, there are tenants right now at the moment that, on top of their, paying their high rent cost, they're having to pay now for parking, and they're having to pay now to apply for an apartment, $100 per application. These types of services that you're talking about, would it be able to help these individuals?
No, not for that type of, not for those type of issues, no.
So you know, and that's what concerns me. Sometimes we have, we're providing good services, but sometimes there's a need, a specific need, and for some reason, we're not able to address those needs. On what I just said to you, is there anything, even though these are great things and it's good money, but specific needs that we're going through, how does a tenant give support even through services because they're desperate now? You know, we have high rents. I met with one family, one bedroom, $2,600. They're paying for their parking now, they're paying for, so the services that the city's providing, how do these people get, you guys are the professionals, I'm the one that needs to hear these things, and I like to address their issues. How do they get help with any of these types of services?
That, in that case, we would have to look for some other sources of funding that can actually be useful, this type of activities, but these specific sources of funding, we cannot use them for those, to do those type of direct assistance. Obviously, before, during COVID, there were, we had the ERP, which was a great program, but it was federal funding that came to the city. And that, we were actually able to actually assist directly to a lot of families with their, paying their back rent or supplement to some of their, some of the rent that they were actually paying out there. But right now, there isn't something out there that we can actually use, unless we use general fund. I mean, that could be the other.
So if there are people that are listening right now, and excuse me, that, it takes me a while here, but this is important information. These services that the city is going to provide, who will get this specific help?
This is, this type of funding is used for, is used This is, this type of funding is used for, is, is used, is geared more to low-income families, low, low to median income families, low moderate income families, families. So it's, it can be, it can be used for, for that. So in, in this case, it's more towards any tenant issues that they may have with, with the landlord and things like that. So the, the agencies that are, we're funding are going to assist with those type of, those type of issues, providing those type of services for those type of issues.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much.
Councilmember Osornio, questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So my question is, I believe I have had the opportunity to see this report about two, three times now. And I always see the Sherwood Recreation Center Phase Four. Can you give us an update to when the expected completion date will be? I know we've been talking about that for a couple of years now.
It's been more than a couple of years. It's been, it's been a long time on this, yeah.
At least heard it three.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's been, since we started, I think the first, I think the issue that we have with this, with this project it was, is that we had a long list of wants. And this might, I mean, not, not so much funding in, in this case. So in this case, we have to piecemeal this, this project. We did Phase One, Two, and Three, which took care of the, of the inside of the, of the facility. Now with this Phase Four, it's going to be more of the exterior. So right now, we're at about fifty percent completed on the design of the exterior, which in this case, we're going to be removing some of the, the CMU wall that is, that is in front of the, the facility. That way, it makes, it makes it more, more open, change some of the siding, some of the windows, and just do some, some landscaping, the roof. Like I said, right now, we're at the fifty percent of the sign on this, on that project. Hopefully, by the beginning of the fiscal year, we're going to be complete. And then from there, go to, do an RFP for, to get a contractor, and hopefully construct, start construction either October, November, and have it completed probably by the end of the fiscal year. But it will still have about a year or so to go. Hopefully, this is going to be the last time.
Thank you for the update. No further questions, Mayor.
Okay, great. I will go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome. You have two minutes.
So good afternoon, Councilwoman. My name is Eloise Shim. And I do receive, I guess it's a subsidy. I'm not sure exactly. They have a lot of different terms for what you get from the housing authority through HUD. You don't know if it's really a subsidy or a, I don't know, there's some, there are some other terms. But I've been receiving it for my housing. And the, the question that I have is that I always kind of have trepidation dealing with the housing authority, who I guess handles the HUD, the HUD part of my contract. Because I have to really always have a different worker, and I never know who the worker is. And just recently, I got something mailed to me about going into new housing Villa Del Monte or something like that. And I'm happy where I am. It took me ten years here in Monterey, and I applied for housing twenty-five years ago in Virginia through HUD. So I'm happy where I am. And I just want to know how I wouldn't have to have so much trepidation dealing with the housing authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none in the rotunda, I'll go over to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and close public comment. Come back to council members for comment and action. Councilmember Rocha.
Well, thank you for all of your hard work on this. I do appreciate staff's attempt to really have all of our spending be moving in the same direction to advance the goals and priorities of the department, especially as it relates to housing programs. And I look forward to supporting the work identified in the action plan as, as your council member. Does this require action?
Yes.
I'll move the item for approval.
Second?
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Rocha, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. We'll go on to Councilmember Sandoval for a final comment. All right, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Barrera?
Absolutely, thank you very much for, I know this is not easy work. And I, I know the staff, you're very passionate in what you're doing, so thank you. I, I would also like to see, as we're moving on, as you already know, there's, there's people that are desperate right now because of what's going on with these rents. Some are being taken advantage of as well, and they're hardworking people. So I think as we try to get some more funding where we can be able to advocate for these people, and I want to look towards our city, our attorney, because you know, when these people are coming forward, they're, they're asking for some kind of guidance, some help, and that we help them where they're not being taken advantage of. So, so thank you again for your, your report.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yeah, I just wanted to say again, thanks for the report, and just looking forward to seeing the, the project be done by, by Mayor June of twenty twenty-five.
Yes, while we're still here.
If we're still here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report. We'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, on to, to, thank you. On to two, four dash, two, four, six, the submission of the twenty twenty-three permanent local housing allocation program application and five-year plan amendment to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And it is the Francisco Brambleau Show today. So thank you very much for staying up there. And we look forward to the report.
Okay, now, in this case, what we're going to do, we're asking for the, the item that we're going to be talking about, this is going to be a submission of twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three PLHA application and amendment to the serious PLHA five-year plan. Now, in December two thousand twenty, December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, HD releases, it's two thousand twenty-three, PLHA NOFA, or Notice of Funding Availability. In this NOFA, the HD is allocating eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-two. Now, this is going to be the fourth year out of the five-year plan for this, for this particular funding source. The other thing that we also, we also, we want to, we're proposing is to amend the, the plan. And this plan, this amendment is going to require ten-day, ten-day public comment period. This public, public comment period ends today. And discussions, the, the current five-year plan allocation in, is, if we're looking at the year four and five, we have five percent of the, any allocation that comes into this, to the city, is going to be for public, public program administration. We also have affordable housing development, which is a forty percent ADU production, which is ten percent, matching funds for the local housing trust fund, thirty percent, and also for homeless services assistance, which is another fifteen percent. On year five, we also have five percent for program administration, forty percent for affordable housing development, ten percent also for ADU production, and also thirty percent for matching funds for a local housing trust fund, and the fifteen percent for the homeless services. The amendment that we are proposing, on years four and five, we change the local housing trust funds from zero percent and move it to the homeless services assistance, which is going to be a forty-five percent of whatever allocation we receive. On year five, is to also reduce the local housing trust fund match to zero percent, and also allocate it between affordable housing development to fifty-five percent, and also to the affordable, the homeless services assistance to another thirty percent. This would equate, at least for this year's allocations, to, for program administration, out of the, out of the hundred and sixty-three for program administration will be forty-three thousand. We have three hundred and forty-five thousand for affordable housing development, ADU production, which is another eighty-six thousand. And then the homeless services assistance would receive a three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. With this additional funds for the homeless assistance, homeless service assistance, this will also help us to bridge some of the funding gaps that we have in order for us to, to, to fund the operations of the China Innovation Center and also the Chair Center, too. The public notice and engagement, there was a ten-day public comment, comment, comment notice published in April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. We also went to the Housing and Land Use Committee on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. The department coordination, this is going to be between legal, our legal department and also our finance department. SEQA, this is not a project under SEQA. The strategic plan and goals and strategies, this is more on the gear to the housing, affordable housing, and effective and cultural responsible, responsive, responsive government. Fiscal impact and sustainability, there's no impact to the general fund. These annual allocations are, they need to be spent within the, the next five years. Now, our recommendation is going to be a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the submission of serious annual application for the two thousand twenty-three PLHA funds to a state HCD and submission of an amendment, PLHA five-year plan, and appropriation of two thousand, the two thousand twenty-three PLHA funds to General Ledger, Counter, Fund SP two, which is twenty-five, twenty-nine fifty-one, and also the city manager designate to execute all applicable agreements. And with that, I'm open to any, any questions or comments.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to Councilmember Rocha, questions?
Have we been in contact with especially affordable housing developers about this NOFA that's going to go out?
We, we have, we're in contact, we have been having regular meetings with CHISP, our Housing, Housing Authority. We also had it with, was it Mid Penn? I think it was Mid Penn. Who else? Yes, and, and so there's, we have been in contact with a lot of, a lot of these, these developers, but they don't have any shovel-ready projects at this moment. So we're actually working with them in order for us to figure out, okay, where are their projects at? What stages are they at? In order for us to be planning how to, how to use this, how to move this funding around.
The projects are underway already that have received funding from us in the past. Would they be ineligible from receiving this round of funding if they already received it under the previous award process?
The projects that the city has, affordable housing projects, there could be, because we, obviously, we recently purchased the Lray Motel. That's going to be one of the projects where we're going to be looking at some of the funding that we have for affordable housing that can actually be used in order for us to do the renovations of that, of that, that building. So we're also looking into that, too.
My understanding is that PLA, PLHA is an annual funding. And what I'm saying is if someone received funding the year prior, are they ineligible from receiving it the next year?
If, if they have now a, a, a project that is, that falls under the, the, the requirements that the grant has, yes. We might, we might also consider that.
Okay.
But right now, there's nothing.
Okay, understood. Yeah, I was just wondering to see what we could do to get the projects that are in the pipeline to completion. But those are all my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera, questions? Councilmember Osornio? We'll go out, we'll, no problem. We'll go out to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Hi. In hearing your presentation, my name's Karen Cameron. I had a couple of questions. One, you mentioned that the projects were not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. I'm assuming that has to do with new building. So I'm wondering what is being done to protect the public in terms of environmental concerns, particularly any agricultural spraying that may be close by? And then the other question that I came across was, in your budget, it mentioned differentiation on the different years as to how much is being allocated for homelessness. And that ranged anywhere from twenty to eighty-five percent of the budget. Can you further explain why that's been different from year to year?
In, in regards?
Just for, just for purpose of running an effective meeting, we have public comment, and then we can have Francisco respond to any issues or concerns when we come back for final comment. Thank you.
That was the gist of my comments and in forms of questions.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? All right, we'll go to Zoom. Does any member on Zoom, any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? We have Tim, you are up for public comment. You're unmuted, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm just real curious, there's a three hundred and eighty thousand designated for the homeless. I just wanted to be real clear on like what exactly for the homeless it would be used for. I do want to just put out there that, you know, I really hope that we can finish some of these projects, like with the Goodnight Inn, with the projects on Fairview. I know there was a big issue with the developer. I think we, it would have been resolved that, and it's gone through foreclosure, and we were able to hopefully buy these properties. And I think we should prioritize finishing these projects because all the other, you know, like, the other processes we have in place, where we're waiting for someone to become homeless in order to house someone, is not going to be effective. You know, we have to do more to build more housing. So any type of these hotel conversions are probably the, the best method. I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll come back to council members for final comment and action. Councilmember Rocha? I'll have him answer, yeah.
Thank you for, for your work on this, and hopefully we could get this money to as many projects as we can as soon as possible. I don't even explain to you the, the need that exists in our community. And so the more affordable housing we can build, the better. And also to fully fund our homeless services programs in the area. Move the item for approval.
Okay, a motion made by Councilmember Rocha, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. We'll go on for final comments. Councilmember Gonzalez? Okay, Councilmember Barrera, final comments?
Mr. Bramble, I've known you for a while, and thank you for your exceptional work. And I mean that, and, Miss, you know, this department that you're in is so important to the city. And but when we're talking about housing and we're providing services, I am sure that we're doing a good job, so thank you. To the rest of the staff.
Thank you.
Councilmember Osornio? No comments. Mr. Bramble, if you could just maybe say a few words to the public comment question, if you don't mind.
Regarding the SEQA that is on the report, this, the SEQA is, it talks, it's more about the, the submission of the plan and the amendment. So this is not a project, you know, regarding that, regarding SEQA. Now, once a project is, I guess, in case of, of any affordable housing project, then obviously, they have to go through a SEQA process at that time, but not at this moment.
Excellent, thank you. All right, with that, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, we'll go on to the Salinas City Council Consent Agenda. There are three items on consent. Does any council member like to pull an item for a separate discussion or vote? I'll start to my left, Councilmember Rocha. Okay, Councilmember Sandoval? Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera?
Six-four.
Oh, man, I was so close, okay. Councilmember Osornio? Really, dude? Okay, all right. I'll go out to the public. Would any, would any member of the public wish to pull any one of our three items for consent? All right, seeing none, I'll need a motion to approve two, six, five. Oh, sorry, thank you. Any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on consent? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll come back, I'll need a motion to approve two, six, five.
Motion to approve.
A motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Osornio. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Hi.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Aye.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, 259, Councilmember Osorio, you pulled this item.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can just get a little bit of explanation on the resolution here, and the reason I'm asking is just because of the addition of the District III, so if I could just get an overview on this item, just a quick, couple quick words, please.
Probably from the city clerk? Okay?
Yep. So, the consolidation of the election, and this report in particular, is pretty standard every election cycle. The intent is to consolidate our general municipal election with the already existing election in November. The uniqueness of this cycle is that we're also adding the District III consolidation of the special election for District III for the remainder of the two terms. With that, it's a cost savings for us, because we're already consolidating, we already have that election established, so instead of just our standard four seats that we would have, we would have five seats on the November ballot, so.
Thank you so much for the explanation of that. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion made by Councilmember Osorio, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Barrera, you pulled 264.
Yes, Madam Mayor, well, I actually pulled this one because I also wanted to meet the new airport manager. And Mr. Jacobs, thank you for being here. JetWest has been here with the city for many, many years. I know being involved in the, on the Airport Commission years ago, they've been a vital part of our aviation, and now I understand that maybe JetWest may be here and they're selling it to Imperial Aviation, but maybe if my colleagues can hear a little bit about how this is going to help the airport and the community as well.
Okay, well, I'm going to turn it over to our new airport manager, Matt Nelson. He's right behind me, so if you haven't met him, this is Matt Nelson.
Welcome. Welcome.
Mayor, council members, apologize for being out of uniform and not in a suit and tie here, I rotate our cuff. So, we do have on your agenda item the approval for a stock sale of JetWest. We have the owner and the buyer here present as well, and so if it would help to get a little more granular, if you'd like, some more questions answered by those two buyers and sellers, we could do that as well. So essentially, it's allowing this transfer of sale, the stock sale, and the sales ability for the Jet A, which is for primarily jets and turbine aircraft, and then 100 low lead for smaller aircraft. And so we think that this new buyer, who has previous FBO or fixed base operator experience, he's well-vetted and has currently four FBOs state or countrywide, so he's looking to add a fifth to his repertoire. He's not new to the industry, he's been here for about 30, 30-plus years, I can see in his resume in the agenda packet, so.
And Mr. Nelson, if I may, we usually have city staff respond to council?
Okay.
Unless there's a question you cannot answer, and that it would be more appropriate to have them respond.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So are there?
No, Mr. Nelson, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to get to know who you are, and congratulations on this venture with Jet West and Imperial.
Thank you.
Because I think it'll be great. A lot of times, we don't know too much about what's happening at the airport, but I know it's a very solvent financial department, and thank you for your good work. Also, if you could please, if I may, take the liberty, can you say thank you to the Airport Commission? You have a dedicated commission there, many, many years.
We are very dedicated, in fact, we have one member here in the audience, Mr., sorry to, Mr. Schumacher's here, so.
Yes.
We are very lucky, we're lucky to have a well-oiled machine there, and the commissioners are very, very aware of what goes on there.
Yes.
And we're also very lucky to have Jet West, too. A lot of, as Car Week gets larger and, larger in Monterey, there's some bleed over to allowing the jet sales and more aircraft parked over in Salinas, as the inn is full over at the Monterey Regional Airport, so we're lucky to have someone that, like Jet West, to accommodate those types of services.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Osorio. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osorio?
Aye.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we'll go on to council member reports, appointments, and future agenda items. We do have back-to-back-to-back meetings this month, so if we could keep them relatively succinct, I'll start to my left, Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, I want to invite everyone to Steinbeck Park this Friday at 2:00 PM. We will be having a ribbon cutting for a brand-new park at Steinbeck Park. I grew up in that neighborhood, so it's very special, I know a lot of people grew up there, and so finally we got to have a new park that that neighborhood's waited for so long for. I have a Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority Board meeting on Thursday, and also a Community Human Services Board meeting, which my colleague, Councilmember Sandoval, will be stepping in for me in that role, and that's all that I have to report.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Well, I also have a Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority meeting, and the big news for me, or for residents of District Five, is we have our annual District Five cleanup, which is going to be happening at Northridge Mall next to the old Sears Building, so it's an opportunity for residents to come and bring their trash and throw it out for free and not pay expensive fees. So we invite the community to come out, and we'll be there from 9:00 to 12:00 PM, and I invite everyone also. Feel free to come and volunteer, my colleagues, to help the traffic move, and the more volunteers we have, the faster we can keep our lines moving, so everyone's invited to volunteer as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, had two great meetings with a group of residents, the first from the Paseo Grande neighborhood, who expressed their concerns about people double parking on certain cul-de-sacs over by, I think it's Gaviota and Paseo Grande itself. So we talked about parking enforcement, enforcement, code enforcement, it was good to get their input and connect them with city staff, then met with other residents near Nogal Drive, talking about maintenance, safety, and cleanups at Nativity Creek Park. They were happy to see an improvement, but unfortunately, there continues to be an issue with folks dumping things at the park, so despite the cleanups, that definitely does kind of counteract the improvement, so wanted to call attention to that. And then just inviting the public to two upcoming events. The first tomorrow, YOSEL is having their spring concert at 7:00 PM at Sherwood Hall, and then on Friday, May 24, the Alisal Center for Fine Arts is hosting a community learning session that is going to be done with the support of Monterey County Rape Crisis, Monterey Rape Crisis Center, where they're going to talk about child abuse prevention and awareness, educating parents and families, so I think that'll be a very useful event for families and community members alike. And that is it for me.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, thank you. Yesterday, we had a MST Monterey-Salinas Transit Board meeting. The staff at the MST is looking for better facilities, place for all of our buses, so we're, we've been working on that, which is pretty exciting. I want to thank the MST staff for providing some good services to our people with disabilities. It's been a good program where people get vouchers and service to be able to get to their doctors or wherever they need to go for medical services. Also, on Thursday evening, I will be participating at the top 100 academic students at Alisal High School. You know, one of the interesting things about that school, I just found out there's a long waiting list of students wanting to get into that school, even some people from Monterey wanting to come to that school, which is, says a lot of the, of the services, the sports programs, so I will be there on Thursday night, looking forward to that. Thank you.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yeah, I wanted to invite folks out to CCA's celebration, Decolores Annual Celebration. It'll be this Friday, May 17, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It'll be at the fairgrounds in Monterey, so if folks have an opportunity to go out to that event, it's going to be a great time. Also, inviting folks out to the Joe Cap book release on Saturday, May 18, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, over at the Steinbeck Library. It's going to be a really good event. And then also, May 18, which will be Saturday as well, if folks haven't had a chance to purchase tickets just yet, Jacob's Heart will be in town at the Taylor Building on Saturday, having their, one of their fundraiser social events. I encourage folks to support that nonprofit organization, they do great work, and just another reminder, about 75% of their caseload actually comes from Salinas, so it's really important to obviously support organizations that do this work. So if folks have an opportunity to go to that event, it will be at the Taylor Building this Saturday, May 18, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, I believe, so that's going to be all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, I just want to take a quick moment to acknowledge new Eagle Scout Raymond Luna here in Salinas, he contacted City Hall. Fun fact, you get a badge for interviewing and talking to an elected official, so I have had the privilege of talking to many Girl Scouts and many Boy Scouts in my 12 years in office. And Mr. Luna, young man who was homeschooled, going for his Eagle Scout badge, reached out to the city and said, "I would like to do a project for the city, I'd like to paint all the fire hydrants." As many fire, I shouldn't say all the fire hydrants, that's a lot of fire hydrants, he took on a huge project of 40 fire hydrants in the city, put him in contact with Sam Klemic, Chief Klemic, who then redirected me to Cal Water, and Cal Water took the ball and ran, and absolutely made a huge production of this young man, who gave his time and energy and effort back to the city of Salinas. So I, on behalf of the council, presented him with a certificate of recognition, and just want to say thank you to the young man who, Mr. Luna, Raymond Luna, who scored his Eagle Scout badge and also did good in our community. So I want to also just take a quick moment to acknowledge the Hometown Heroes Ceremony that occurred on Saturday. Thank you to Councilmember Osorio for stopping by, and Chief Murray for also attending, thank you. Really a great opportunity to acknowledge a lot of our residents who have served and sacrificed for our country and our community, so very heartfelt event as always, and really appreciated everybody participating. Lastly, I have CASP tomorrow morning, so I'll be attending that, and that is it for my reports. I think we have a world record of adjourning this meeting at 5:03 PM. Meeting adjourned, we'll see you next week.